All right. Wake up, everyone. That's right. Good evening and welcome to the September 20th, 2021, Meeting of the City of Summit, Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Steve Spur and I am Chairman of the Summit Zoning Board. In accordance with New Jersey Statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to a newspaper of record and has been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the Board may consider legally in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page and Hometown Television, and please note that individuals wishing to provide testimony must participate in person. In close consultation with the city clerk's office, as well as careful consideration of relevant CDC and NJDOH guidance, the following precautions have been adopted to protect board members, professionals, including city staff, applicants, members of the interested public, and others in consideration of ongoing public health concerns. First, all meeting attendees are required to wear face masks regardless of vaccination status unless speaking is part of the formal proceeding. Social distancing is encouraged wherever practical. Face masks and hand sanitizer are available for attendees to use at the meeting room entrance, and regular and rigorous cleaning of the facilities are being conducted by city staff. Please note that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening device to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the deus and return it thereafter. Andy Ball is the zoning board attorney. He will advise the board members on matters of law and is the key interface with an applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball does not vote on the applications. Chris Nicola is a city employee and is the zoning board secretary. Mr. Nicola works with applicants on preparing their applications, planning our agendas, and keeping our meeting minutes. Mr. Nicola also does not vote on the applications. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight, but a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Some applications require five affirmative votes to be approved. You'll be told which majority will be required before we begin our deliberations. Mr. Nicola, would you please call the role of the members?
Sure. Chairman Spur?
Here.
Ms. Chairwoman Noll is excused. Mr. Uco is also excused. Mr. Steiner?
Here.
Mr. Mullen?
Here.
Ms. Schwartzstein?
Here.
Mr. Malley?
Here.
Mr. Loikitz?
Here.
Ms. Toth?
Here.
Ms. Sager?
Here.
And Dr. Labee?
Here.
All right, you have a quorum, you can proceed.
We generally hear the cases in the order they are listed on the agenda. We try to have each hearing last no more than 30 minutes, but we do understand that some cases are too complex to be heard within that timeframe. Each hearing begins with the applicant or their attorney giving an overview of the application and the variances that are required. We then hear from any expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why the variances are needed. The board members may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Once the board members and the board professionals have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This is not the time to tell us what you think about this case. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It is important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the audience have their second opportunity to speak, and at that time may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public is, the public hearing is closed, and we enter into executive session where the board members discuss the case and vote. You will be able to listen to our executive session, but you will normally not be able to participate in our discussion. Most applications are heard and decided in the same evening. If a case requires additional information or testimony that cannot be presented tonight, we will carry your case to another date, and it will not be decided during this meeting. Krista Anderson, the city zoning officer, is asked to remind all applicants that they must read carefully the resolution that documents the zoning board's decision, and to pay particular attention to the conditions contained in the resolution. For example, if a landscaping plan is required, you must obtain one and submit it to John Linton, the city's forester. If a grading plan is required, you must have one prepared by a civil engineer and submit three copies along with the application fee to the city's engineering division. Failure to satisfy all conditions in a resolution will result in a delay in approving your application, as it will cause extra work for city zoning staff. The resolutions documenting the board's decision will normally be available one month after we decide the case. When I call your name, please let me know, please tell me how many witnesses you have and whether you think you can complete your case within 30 minutes. First on the agenda this evening is 4 Waldron Avenue, which I don't believe Mr. Mayner is here. I scanned the room before, so we'll just, we'll address that. You want to address it now, just to clear off?
Yeah.
So, the applicants requested an adjournment to a December hearing, and the meeting I would suggest would be the December 21st meeting, which would be a Tuesday.
So this would just constitute for the board members, an adjournment, this is 4 Waldron Avenue, the Beacon Unitarian case. We would carry it to the December 21st meeting, hopefully at that time either seeing a decision made or perhaps even the case withdrawn. So with that, we would just need a motion to carry this case to the December 21st meeting, understanding that Mr. Mayner has waived any consideration of further notice that's required under the statute. Do we have a motion to carry this to December 21st? All right, Diana gets the motion. Second?
Second.
All right, Scott gets the second. Need a roll call, Ms.?
Yeah, before we do, should we do with or without further notice, Andy?
Without further notice, and yeah, you mentioned that, and we also had waived the timeframe within which to act, so.
Okay. Yep, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
Seeing them.
4 Waldron, carry to December 21st.
Ditto.
Yeah, we do have recusals for Mr. Steiner and Ms. Toth as well.
All right, thank you. Chris is doing a particularly good job speaking into the microphone tonight. Like to applaud him for that and recommend everyone else do the same.
He's putting it back to me.
Oh, you're sharing, even better, right? Extra credit. All right, second on the agenda is Matthew and Melissa Cooper, 7 Ramsey Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Samantha.
Would you mind just come, sorry, just coming up to the speaker? Our court reporter is doing this over the livestream, so that's why we ask. Thanks.
Thank you. Samantha Alfonso of Dempsey-Demsey &amp; Sheehan, and we should take about 30 minutes.
Any professionals with you tonight?
Yes, we have three professionals, one in reserve and two that we expect to testify as well as the applicants.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Second is 7 Dorset Lane, Dana Simuluka and Bettina Hernandez. Mr. Rosen, I see, or is there an attorney or just the applicants? Okay. Would you mind just coming up, one of the applicants just coming up quickly? You can go either to the lectern here or to the table. Hello?
Oh, hi.
Yep, your name?
Dana Simuluka.
Excellent, and you have Mr. Rosen, I see, with you this evening?
Mr. Rosen, yes. Mr. Giuliano and Bettina Hernandez, my wife.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you very much. We'll call you second, thank you. And then finally, Brian and Lindsey Gilman, 34 Locust Drive. Can you come to the?
Can I speak?
Are you here representing the applicants or the applicants yourself?
No, I'm representing. He's, he just texted me, he's on his way, he had an emergency at home.
Okay.
So.
And who, who are you?
Elizabeth Rush on their architect.
Okay, excellent. Any other professionals planning to join the case?
Andrew Clark, our engineer.
All right, excellent. All right, well, I'm sure he'll have enough time. Let us know if it changes, though, okay?
Okay, great, thank you, sorry about that.
No problem. All right, first up is, then 7 Ramsey Drive, Ms. Alfonso, if you'll kick us off. You're hiding behind Mr. Clark there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Samantha Alfonso of Dempsey-Demsey &amp; Sheehan, here on behalf of the applicants, Matthew and Melissa Cooper. As stated, this is with regard to the property located at 7 Ramsey Drive. It's block 3004, lot 18. The application proposes a wholesale renovation and almost the construction of a new home. It has been deemed equivalent to that by Krista Anderson for purposes of calculating the front yard setback. The proposal calls for, as I mentioned, the renovation of the entire home as well as the exterior. The entire property is covered mostly with steep slopes, about 58%. It also is bisected by a significant 20-foot easement. I am showing an exhibit, and I spoke with Chris about this. We'll do all of this as A1 if possible. Thank you. And this is a copy of the lot grading plan, showing in orange, yellowish-orange is the lot line. The blue is the 20-foot sanitary sewer easement, and the green line is meant to depict the proposed, the available building envelope. And the front green line shown is actually to the 41.5-foot setback, which is 5.1 feet further than the actual standard in the zone, but it is close to the neighborhood average setback required, which is 45.4. In order to see these improvements through, the applicants require variances due to these two factors, the significant 20-foot easement and the significant steep slopes covering the property. These variances include, obviously, the first for steep slopes, the disturbance of steep slopes over 15%, for combined side yard of 33.8% or 35% is required or permitted, floor area ratio variance for a floor area of 27.3% where 25 is permitted, the driveway width of 20 feet where 12 feet is permitted, and the curb cut. My apologies, here I want to have the right number. The curb cut proposed at 18 feet where 12 feet maximum is permitted. Krista Anderson also noted a separate variance for two front porch encroachments. One encroachment of six feet is permitted of not more than 60 square feet. Here we have two, she noted, proposed total area of 216 square feet for about 156 square feet over the permitted encroachment for porches. And as noted, the front yard setback, the average front yard setback, we have portions of the front of the house goes to 39 feet. Most of the house is setback, as shown at the 41.5-foot setback. Unless the board has any questions of me, I would.
Any questions for Ms. Alfonso from the board? No, all right, you may proceed to your first witness.
Thank you. I would ask Matthew and Melissa Cooper to be sworn in to give testimony.
All right, would you each please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And please, one at a time, state your name, spell your last name.
Matthew Aaron Cooper, C-O-O-P-E-R.
Melissa, Melissa G. Cooper, C-O-O-D-E-R. Thank you. Can you tell me about the existing conditions of the site?
So we have, we've been looking at renovating this property for close to five years now. We've been working with Elizabeth now for almost two. There's some obvious challenges between the slope, it's about almost 40 feet from front to back, and then having a 20-foot easement cutting diagonally through the middle of your lot created some interesting challenges, as I'm sure you can imagine. So I think we've, we've landed on a plan that, you know, we obviously need some help to make work, but we think it's, it's a great improvement to the house itself, but the neighborhood as well.
Thank you, and can you go into a bit more detail about the proposal?
So we are looking at a total renovation of the house. The, the current layout creates just some significant challenges in just how we live. We have a family of four kids and, so six total, and so the, you know, as we look at this plan, you know, we wanted to sort of change the overall flow, the aesthetic, of course. It's an open floor plan. We're putting a lot of work into kind of the front, sort of the external facing aspects of both the front yard, the backyard. So I think the plan that we'll go through today, we feel, you know, we're very excited about the, the potential here, and we've come up with a, what will hopefully be a great, great outcome.
Thank you. You engaged the services of professionals to assist you with this?
Yes, so Elizabeth Rush is our architect, Jim Bozberg for landscape, and then Andrew Clark is our engineer.
Thank you. And did you have an opportunity to review the administrative reports of the board's professionals?
We did.
Subject to the comments of your professionals, would you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in the board's reviews?
Yes.
Thank you. One last question. Did you have a chance to speak with any of your neighbors with regard to this application?
We did.
And the ones that you spoke with, did they seem favorable?
Yes, with, I guess, two potential exceptions.
Thank you. The people that you spoke with?
Yes, the people that we spoke with were all positive.
Thank you. And I would submit the Hoopers to the board's.
Any questions from the board to the applicants? Understanding we'll hear from a couple of professionals here momentarily. No?
One question on the driveway width. Just can you walk through why you need such a wide driveway?
The, the angle of coming in and out of that, that driveway, and we have two large cars, Yukon XL dragging around four kids, so just coming in and out of that without a wider apron, you end up, I mean, I had to, in our current yard, I had to put rocks in that I named after all my in-laws because they tend to run through the garden on the way in, so having a broader entry just saves us a lot of headache.
What's the current width of it right now?
Good question.
It's, what's the width of the current driveway, of the apron?
It's quite wide now, and we already have. I'll ask Andrew to see if he can pull it out.
It's the same? Yeah, it's the same as, so the, the proposed is the same width as the existing. It's just already broader than the back.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board for the applicants?
Can you give me an idea of the exact nature of the restrictions that you are subject to with respect to the sewer?
Ms. Sager, if I may, I believe that this is more of a question that Andrew Clark, the engineer, can get into more detail since it is an engineering type of issue.
You're on notice, Mr. Clark, if they answer that, all right? All right, any other questions from the board for the applicants? And then are there any members of the interested public here for this particular application? No takers? All right, fair enough. Now, I'm not asking you to comment necessarily at this time, but are, are you here in, with respect to this application?
Yes.
Okay, so how it'll work is after each witness, you'll have the opportunity to ask any questions. And at the conclusion of the application, the hearing, you may offer any comments that you have in favor or in opposition. So we'll pause at the end of each. If I don't see you jumping out of your seat, then we'll continue to move on. All right, thank you. Okay, Ms. Alfonso, you may move to your next witness.
Thank you. I would ask Elizabeth Rush, the architect.
Good evening.
And if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Elizabeth Rush, R-U-S-H.
Thank you, and I know you were admitted before this board at some point in the relatively recent past.
Yes.
Any changes to your credentials since that point?
No.
All right, any questions from the board?
Questions, welcome, Ms. Rush, or...
Thank you so much. So I, I think Sam and Melissa and Matt went over some of the technical aspects of the application. I'd like to breathe a little bit of life into where we, where we are right now and how we got here. The Coopers mentioned, they've been there since 2014, and they've been planning this renovation, to some extent, for probably the last five years. They came to me in 2019, November. I'm gonna read off of some of my notes because I have a lot to cover. But they had lived in the house since 2014, as I had mentioned, and they were ready to begin the, the design of their dream home. As a family of six with four girls, they were looking for more space, a more modern, up-to-date layout, as well as the desire to be able to more efficiently use their property for outdoor entertaining, as well as a play area for their children. The existing colonial built in 1964 has a classic layout of the time with medium-sized rooms that are separated and cut off from one another. Previous to the Coopers, there had been a new owner every few years with no significant improvements or updates made to the house. Sam, if you could pull up the existing grading plan or the existing survey? Just to go over quickly, just a few notes about the existing kind of setting of the house, and again, the driveway. The existing driveway actually enters on the left of the property. It's...
Yeah.
That's probably okay.
Not the actual center.
Yeah. Well, I can probably just describe it well enough. The existing driveway snakes around the front of the house, so it enters on the left-hand side, if you're looking at the front of the house, goes across the front of the house, around the right side, down to the back of the, of the house with a parking area below. So they have a rear-facing garage at the bottom level. As a result, just to gain access to the main level of the house, their two large cars, as Matt had mentioned, are often parked in front of the home, blocking views from the front of the house. The rear wood deck is old and needs repair, and they also, in the foundation and the garage, they have shown signs of cracking and settling. Despite their frustrations with the house, they absolutely love the neighborhood and have many close friends within walking distance. So moving was out of the question. I have to be honest, after our initial meeting and visiting the site, I knew that this would be one of the most challenging projects I have ever taken on in Summit. This particular area of Summit along Ramsey and Portland has dramatic hills and slopes, as I'm sure you are aware. As the city engineer, Mr. Dower, notes in his report, bullet number three, the site from front to back drops off approximately 40 feet in elevation. Added to the steep slopes is the presence of a 20-foot wide stormwater easement that has been discussed. These two factors, the height change across the lot and the easement, were defining factors or restrictions, rather, in the design of the Cooper's home. Sam, can you pull up the existing foundation plan? So when I first met with the Coopers, we had the idea that this would be an addition. That, that quickly evolved into essentially a top-to-bottom renovation, given the condition of the house. The Coopers have experienced water problems and foundations settling, cracking along the entire right side. I'll just explain it. I think you guys have the, the plans up there. Along the entire right side of the existing foundation. We decided that we should remove that portion of the foundation, but keep the entire length of the front and left side foundation walls. Extending the house too far back towards the rear of the property would create a condition where the house fell into what I like to call the hollow of the property and encroach upon the easement setback. Because of the height and slope changes in the site, we limited how far back to extend the house and worked meticulously on calculating the exposed perimeter foundation and overall heights of the residence in relationship to the average grade plane. That was a really important thing with this project. I do want to, I just want to reiterate that. I'm sure you all are aware with the, you have to be 50/50 for the basement not to count as a story and contribute to FAR and the overall height of the building. So in order to do that, there's a delicate balance between 50% exposed foundation, over six feet, and 50% that isn't exposed. So that was constantly revisited and checked over and over again. The result is a design that is compliant on number of stories and building height, despite the fact that the steep slopes exist on over 58% of the property. Sheet Z103, basement and first floor. I'll just go in quickly to the layout and the design of the proposed residence. So the basement and first floor plan. That's great. So starting on the first floor, we begin with a center hall, two-story entry space and open staircase. Classic layout with formal dining and living room on either side. There's a mudroom that connects the kitchen, family space to the left, entry porch of the house and access to the driveway. So where the driveway is, the, the first floor plan is in the upper left-hand, or is upper right-hand side. That left-side entry porch is actually probably going to be used more than the front portico. It does provide access to the, there's a powder room and a mudroom right there. The, this front traditional zone opens up towards the rear of the home with a family room and kitchen with eat-in dining space. There's a deck, part of which is covered, to offer outdoor living and entertaining off the kitchen and family room. Away from the more active part of the first floor, we have planned for Melissa's home office and study reading room on the right side of the residence. At the basement level, there's a side-facing entry two-car garage, which opens up to the driveway that has been relocated to the left side of the property, as I previously described. This, the basement includes the garage, storage rooms, utility room, TV area and a workout room. Fortunately, we were able to capture some area under the covered porch that will allow the children to access the play area on the lawn from the basement. Sheet Z104, it's the next one. Yes, so on the second floor, the second floor layout consists of five bedrooms and four bathrooms, along with a laundry room. A back staircase is proposed from the mudroom to give the family easy access to and from their bedrooms, as well as access to a finished portion of the attic that Matt will use as his home office. Amidst the challenges of COVID, Matt realized he would need an area of the house that is remote and away from the noise of the kids to work and take calls. If you could pull up the new front rendering, please? For the exterior, I'd like to begin by reviewing the first of two renderings that I've prepared for this evening. It was up earlier. I'll start while she's getting that going. As is evident in the first rendering from the front view of Ramsey Drive, while designing the home, it was the intent to keep the existing colonial style, style, excuse me, and aesthetic consistent with the other homes in the neighborhood. The main central massing of the house is highlighted with a central portico and entry, as well as three traditional dormers across the front roof. On either side of this central mass, there's a two-story element, the left side having a lower side entry porch and the right also having a lower roof over Melissa's home office. The slightly lowered roofs, first floor roofs, were added to create articulation, appropriate scale and differentiation along the front elevation facing Ramsey Drive. The multi-pane windows, gable roof lines, entry porticos, as well as the stone retaining walls at the primary entry along Ramsey Drive are in keeping with the architectural style and character of the neighborhood. The side view, please. Moving around to the side of the home and sort of seeing the, the back of, the back of the property, you are able to see how the grade wraps around the house. The intent here was to nestle the home into the slope of the site and soften the relationship between the grade and the foundation. I'd like to take just a minute to go over Krista's comments that have to do with the FAR, as well as the side yard setbacks. Number one on her staff comments, the front yard setback for two front encroachments with the porches. The center, I guess you could pull up the front rendering, that might be better. Thank you. The center portico and left front entry porch, those are the two open porches, encroach into the average front yard setback of 45.4 feet. I think Sam went over that. That is the average front yard setback because we are deemed a new construction. As Krista noted, again, because of the renovation, that is a little bit more generous of a front yard setback than the R15 zone requirement. Number two, the front yard setback at the home office extension, it, it is, the intent there is basically to mirror that side porch, but it is a habitable portion of the house, and that is 39 feet from the front property line. Again, I do want to reiterate, the majority of the front of the home is setback at the 45.1 line. You can go, you can probably just leave that up. So the number three for a total side yard, actually, go back to that side one, please. For a total side yard combined percentage of 33.77. So the portion of the home that triggers this part of the variance is on the right side, near that home office that I just mentioned. In an effort to keep the foundation perimeter, what I spoke about earlier, in balance and not trigger the building story or height non-compliance, we chose to leave that wall at that den where it is. It also creates a nice massing change on that side of the house. Yes, because the lower wall extends out and you have that nice roof below, so it's not just a flat two-story wall right there. I do want to know, all areas of the home are compliant with the 15-foot side yard setbacks, however, showing 21.6 feet on the left-hand side and 23.1 on the right-hand side. The last one that I will comment on, the last comment from Krista, is number four for the FAR of 27.3, where 25% is allowed. If you'd like to go to sheet Z104 and maybe zoom in on the attic plan. That's fine, it's, I mean, it's fine. So the overage of the 2.3% is equivalent to 543 square feet, as Krista notes in her comments. The majority of that number is the area that is above seven feet headroom along the attic and roof lines. So when designing the roof lines for this house, I was careful to keep these at a slope that are consistent with the colonial style of the home. I believe they're at eight and 12. In doing so, that creates a higher roof line, so you do create that space in the attic and underneath the roof lines. The space under the attic and underneath the roof lines that I'm speaking about constitutes for 406 square feet of that 543 square feet that we're over. Although we are slightly over on the FAR, I do feel that the property is more than capable of accommodating this carefully designed and architecturally attractive home. In support of this statement, I would like to call attention to the fact that we are under the maximum building coverage of 17.3% and under the maximum lot coverage of 30.5%. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. Any further questions from Ms. Rush?
I do not, I would ask if you...
Any questions from members of the board for Ms. Rush, the architect? Scott, your eyes are scanning those documents. Anything you want to call out?
No.
All right, fair enough. Then any questions from the interested public for the architect? And this is only questions, no comments. Anything? No, okay, fair enough. All right, let me proceed to your next witness then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dower, you can jump in at any time too, but I figure you're waiting for the engineer here, so.
And with that, I would ask that Andrew Clark be sworn in to give testimony.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Andrew Clark, C-L-A-R-K-E.
Thank you, and I imagine no changes to your credentials since two weeks ago.
No.
Welcome back, Mr. Clark, you may proceed.
Thank you. If you can get just the site plan up, with or, with or without the even violating, it's fine. So I imagine that I'm kind of the main event tonight. Due to the nature of this property, as has been already discussed considerably, the, the steep slopes and the constraints of the easement, a lot of this comes down to engineering and how the site work is going to develop. Obviously, the architecture looks, looks lovely, and I think it's going to be a terrific renovation and basically new house. As far as the site work goes, I'll just walk briefly through. The existing conditions were well-described already, I think, but I'll just touch on it a little bit as, as we've gone over and over from the, the uppermost part of the lot to the lowermost, is about 38 feet vertically. So you have about 58% of the steep slopes on this property. I have an exhibit in there that shades out all of where those areas are, so I don't want to belabor that too much. The areas where there are not steep slopes is generally around and directly around the existing dwelling right now. The edges and the front are, are all in steep slope condition. And sometimes in Summit, people, when I'm out surveying or, or working through an engineering project, are a little confused about steep slopes because a 15% slope, to most people commonly, doesn't look that dramatic in the field. A lot of these slopes are more than that, you know, and, and there's, you know, we're approaching one-on-three, one-on-four slopes, so every four feet horizontally goes up a foot. A steep slope would be, anything over 15% is basically every, almost seven feet goes up one. So that's just to put it in context. The existing site has really no formal stormwater management to speak of. A lot of what I witnessed on the site, I didn't do the survey, but I did walk the site pretty extensively in preparing the engineering drawings and supplementing some of the information from the survey. A lot of what goes on out there is you have either roof leaders discharging at grade, or some of them are collected and, and then discharging somewhere in the slope that goes down just to a pipe that's daylighting, as we, as we say. There's a drain in the bottom of the driveway that, that goes back and just discharges at grade, a little farther back on the lot. So most of what's going on with the stormwater management, or all of it really, is, is very far from a modern standard in terms of how it's handled. I imagine that, that in a storm like some of them, we've seen the back-to-back recent storms, you're getting a lot of runoff here. Not only are the neighbors suffering that effect, I would say, but, but the Coopers are. There's a lot of erosion that takes place as a result of those steep slopes. So that's sort of framing out what's out there now and how it's functioning now. What we're proposing to do is completely rearrange the driveway arrangement that sweeps around and comes around the, the back of the house. And we're going to do a side load on the left side. That, in order to accomplish that, we do have a driveway that is a bit steep coming down, but then it flattens out in the area outside the garage. We're putting a drain in the back-left corner of that driveway and then managing all that driveway runoff with the drywall system. What we're planning to do was, in one of the, in the engine... What we're planning to do was, in one of the, in the engineer's letter, mentioned that the note on my plan says that all the roof leaders are going to be tied into the drywall system. That was in error. I have that note commonly on all new construction, and I forgot to remove it here. What instead we're planning to do is tie the roof leaders directly into the storm, this large storm pipe that runs down through the easement and control it in that manner, so that all the roof water would be directed straight into the stormwater system. Putting that in the context of what Summit requires for even regular permitting, when you do a project and you increase the impervious coverage, you need to manage that increase so that there's, the finished condition is certainly no worse than what it was before the project. In this case, we're increasing about five-hundred-and-fifty square feet of coverage, which isn't really a lot considering all the work that's occurring on site. You know, it's sort of a trading and reassignment of the coverage that's there into other, another arrangement altogether. So normally, we would be required to manage five-hundred-and-fifty-three square feet of that new impervious coverage. In this case, we're managing the entire driveway, which is twenty-four hundred square feet, so it's about a little more than four times the amount that we would normally be required to for permitting, with full recognition that stormwater is a big part of this whole project, and we don't want to just make sure we're not making it worse. We would like to make it better. And in fact, I believe we will make it better substantially. So first, we have the driveway being managed with the drywall. We have the roof leaders all being managed in the twenty-four-inch pipe that runs through the easement. But then the other important aspect of this that will, I believe, help substantially with the stormwater profile of this property is the reduction of a lot of these steep slope areas. So we're going to take the whole area behind the house and flatten most of that out. It's not going to be flat, but it's going to be flat compared to what's there by a long shot. So you're going to get usable yard area that flattens it out. So what that means with stormwater is when you have a site like this, and then you put a lot of it like that, it means the rain that falls has a lot more opportunity. It quiets the rain, the runoff from the site, and it gives it a lot of opportunity to soak into the landscaping, the lawns, and the natural areas that are back there. So it actually presents a much better profile in terms of runoff than what's there now. So for those reasons, I think generally the stormwater aspects of this project are going to be a substantial improvement. Combined with the landscaping plan, which looks like a very elaborate, well-conceived plan, and Bozenberg does terrific work, I think we'll have like a really top-notch project when this is done. So with regards to the steep slope areas, what that all boils down to is, how do you build it and is it controlled well during construction? That's really the key for, in my opinion, for most steep slope disturbance projects, certainly one like this. So what we have in place now is the super silt fence on the downhill. That would be standard. The super silt fences, you often see the silt fences, the black fence that they put around to keep any soil from migrating off-site. The super silt fence is that with a, basically like a chicken wire reinforcement to give it some strength, so that if you have some mud that does break loose during the construction period, it will be contained. We may need more measures than that, depending on how the site is working. You know, we may need to hay bale the downhill side. It's something that's sort of a dynamic process during construction. It has to be watched and maintained constantly. So that's absolutely concern, but we do have the measure shown here at least guiding the way to doing this correctly. This will also, of course, be reviewed by the Soil Conservation District, who I'm sure will have, you know, a discerning eye to review this and something to say about it as well. The couple of things that I think were mentioned before that I can maybe touch on is I think there was a question about the easement and what the implication of that is. So the easement is for stormwater, and it's twenty feet, and it comes parallel with the sideline and then cuts on an angle across the property. It's about forty-four hundred square feet of the lot is this easement area, so it's about eighteen percent of the lot. It's also in an arrangement that sort of restricts the area and what you can do. With an easement such as this, you can't build any structures, like a shed or a pool or garage or anything like that cannot be constructed within the easement area. It often happens that more passive elements are allowed in the easement, such as a driveway or some landscaping, things of that nature. So it's not, you know, exclusive use, but at top level, this easement provides stormwater a route downhill, and the city, who's the benefactor of the easement, as it were, has the right to come in and replace or repair any of the improvements that are within that easement. So that means if, let's say something happens with the easement, and there's a pipe that, I don't know, tree roots got through it. It's pretty unlikely with twenty-four-inch pipe, but something like that happens. Or the pipe collapses because it's now a hundred years old, and they have to repair a section of it. They would have to come in with the equipment necessary to dig that up and repair it. So what the homeowner, anyone who's burdened with the easement, has to make sure is that there's a legitimate path for that to occur. They can impair that. And to the extent possible, we don't want too many real improvements in there because if they get damaged during construction, they have to be restored. So that's sort of the top-level concern with the easement and the constraint that it implies to anyone who has an easement running across the property. I don't know if that, did that answer the question? Okay. The front setback elements, I just want to point out because there was some discussion about that. Krista mentioned it. It's listed as a variance. I know that Summit overhauled their ordinance. Last year was the final version of that came out. And in that, there was a little change to how the average setback was done. I'm not sure what the background was on how that came about, but what it does now is it includes three houses to either side of the subject property and then three houses across the street. I, I'm sure there was a meaningful discussion about why the across-the-street houses, but in a practical context, to me, what's on your side of the street is more relevant in terms of its impact. And so the setback for the properties on our side of the street averaged thirty-nine point eight feet. So I just want to make sure we understand in context that there were two properties across the street that were significantly farther back, and one, the third one, was so far back that it was more than double the required setback, so it was not included in the calculation. So I think that practically speaking, our front setback along the roadway is consistent with what's out there. It's not going to look anomalous or strange in driving down the road. The only elements that are projecting even close to that forty-foot line, that thirty-nine point three is where the porch is at, and then the office on this side, those are also only one-story elements. So they don't have the massing of the full house that's behind them. So I just want to make sure that's clear in terms of the front setback. I could take a breath, if you'd like, and answer some questions, or I could jump into the review memo, whichever you'd like. I don't know if there's questions brewing. We can hit some of those first.
I have a question. I'm curious how often the health of that line, that's the stormwater easement pipe, how often the health of that pipe is assessed for root intrusion or age or anything else?
Right. Well, we did. In fact, I recommended that a little while ago, that, two things. We couldn't locate the manhole that was downhill. It had been covered over with soil and mulch over time. I was able to dig out the one that's nearest the house. But I recommended exactly that. I said, whenever you're in a case where, you know, hopefully if we have a positive result, we're going to do construction work out there. And anytime you come close to a pipe like that, there's a concern whether you might impact it during construction. So for me, getting a baseline is a smart thing to do. So the Coopers did hire, I think it was all county sewer, came out, and they TV'd the line and checked the integrity, and it seemed to be just fine. It doesn't happen very often, though, that it's compromised, certainly not with a twenty-four-inch pipe. That's a big storm pipe. Most commonly fifteen inches, like the standard size, but you see a lot of smaller sizes. The smaller sizes and older clay pipes tend to suffer a lot more impacts than a concrete pipe will. Usually, for a concrete pipe to need some kind of real work done to it, a replacement, something went wrong. You know, it was exposed, and a truck ran over it, or a tree fell on it while it was exposed, something like that. But under normal wear and tear, I mean, it's, concrete will break down eventually. So over a long period of time, at some point, you're going to have a replacement schedule for some of these things. But usually, it's the smaller pipes that suffer from root penetration and things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mr. Clark at the moment?
I have one question on the foresters report. He mentioned, I guess, a twenty-inch diameter white oak in the front yard.
Right.
I was wondering if you could speak.
Yeah, we discussed that. I can point it out. It's, if you can't see it. In front of where the wall's proposed, and in discussion with Mr. Bozenberg, I think, or Mr. Mizuka, we can save that tree. I think that's something that can be saved. It's in an area, actually, one of the few areas that's generally outside of the main disturbance for the property.
So we have added a tree protection detail, and that has not been submitted, just showing up today. We can show us an exhibit if you'd like to look at it, but we are looking to save that tree.
What we'd likely do is we'd condition the application on the submission of a landscaping plan and calling out within that specifically every reasonable effort to preserve the twenty-inch tree.
Right.
And that's something that, you know, the applicant and Mr. Linton can resolve. Appreciate your efforts, that effect.
Thank you.
All right, you may proceed. I have more for us.
Okay. Well, I would like to touch on the review letter from the board's engineer, Mr. Dour. Some of the comments are rightly stating many of the facts of the case. It seems to me that the comments eleven to seventeen are really the meat of the report, where it would require some addressing or testimony. Their comment eleven is, for top level, I think we would agree to satisfy this report as any condition of an approval, for sure.
Yeah. So Ms. Alfonso, we would include that as a condition, acceptance of the engineer's letter.
Yes.
Right. I think the, item eleven points to a couple of differences between migrating plan and the planting plan. We would resolve those completely with regards to the walkways and the coverage numbers that they involve. I mean, in this case, it's not normally the case when I'm involved with many applications, but we actually have, we're well below the permitted lot coverage. So that isn't the kind of sensitivity generally that I usually run into, where we're right up against it. So I think we can adjust that discrepancy and figure out what it is and make those numbers match up. The drywells, we have no problem relocating those, sliding them to the east, to the right, to make sure they're at least ten feet off of that sideline. There's no magic to placing those necessarily, so we'll slide that in.
Sorry, just a positive from Mr. Dower. Is it appropriate, in your opinion, for this application to submit a stormwater management plan to retain drainage jurisdiction?
It's probably not a bad idea, especially with what's involved with this application. I'd also recommend as a condition that they televise that line again after the improvements are done.
Right.
Just to verify that there's been no change.
So Ms. Alfonso, that would be submission of stormwater management plans, subject to the review and approval of the board engineer, retention of drainage jurisdiction for two years, and then television review of the line after the improvements are completed.
Post-construction.
Post-construction.
Right.
Good job, Andy.
And I think I already clarified about the leader drains versus the drywall system in my testimony, which is the rest of that comment number twelve. The AC units on the right side of the house, I think that's really the best positioning for them. And truthfully, they're only encroaching in the easement area by about four or five inches. They're very close, but they also have to be off the house a little bit. So I think they're in a good position. If it's necessary, we could relocate them, but there are some windows on the back of that, if we brought them around just the back of the house, that it starts to come in conflict with. So we could move them if we have to, but I think that it's, there's really going to be no negative impact to the easement in any way by having them, you know, the edge of the AC unit encroaching.
Mr. Clark, do you happen to recall how close to the center line was the actual pipe?
Well, it's pretty close. It's not uniform.
Right.
It's not uniform, but beginning at the street and coming down to where the angle is, it's pretty well-centered, and it begins pretty well-centered as it goes down across the rear yard. But by the time you get back to the back end of that easement at the rear line, it's a little bit to the right, to the east.
So if you strike a line manhole to manhole, it's probably that's the line of the pipe?
Yes. Yeah, for stormwater, for sure. I mean, gas pipes can meander, water lines can meander. Stormwater goes straight from structure to structure. In fact, good design dictates that you would place a structure everywhere there's a turn. Because those are the places where you have maintenance issues and you need to access them with a, you know, a legitimate structure that you can get to.
And did they tell you how far down?
Well, it varies. I mean, I did my own measurements in terms of the depths at the manhole points, so I have that data on the plan. I mean, out at the curb line, out the street, it's about ten feet down.
Okay.
Ten or eleven feet down. And then it varies as it comes along the slope. But I did, I did look at that through the length of this in profile to make sure that nothing really extraordinary was happening. There's one area where we're filling a bit, where we start to approach that ten-foot, but that's the maximum through the property.
And the AC units are going to be on a concrete pad?
A lot of times, they're on like a PVC or a vinyl pad. They put like stone to level it out, and then it's just like a, you know, PVC pad that they put down. It's usually not concrete, but sometimes they do a concrete pad there. I mean, we could just make sure not to do a concrete pad in this case. So that it's, if something did have to happen in this easement, you know, first of all, first of all, I think the work would happen far enough away that it wouldn't really come into play, but if it did, something could be done there without having to get a jackhammer out and, you know, remove a concrete slab.
Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you, Scott. Of course, any other points from the engineer's letter you want to address, Mr. Clark?
Yes, there's a couple of points that were made in sixteen and seventeen regarding the driveway, and Krista also mentioned a little bit of that in her memo in terms of the curb cut. So I mentioned before from the peanut gallery there that the curb cut is existing eight feet. That's what's out there now. We're coming right in at that same exact spot. So the curb cut is what it is. It's more than what's allowed. Fifteen is normally what's the maximum permitted at the curb line. And then the driveway, we have it almost twenty feet in that short throat there in front of the house. So that is non-conforming. In addition to that, the slope of the driveway, Summit's ordinance requires variance relief if it's more than ten percent. It is more than ten percent leading down the driveway till you get to where the garage area is. And it's not more than fifteen percent. It's generally twelve to fifteen percent. And it's really something that can't be avoided to work the topography the way we have to on this site. Fifteen is not unusual at all. When you get to twenty percent, sometimes people want to do things like putting heating elements in the driveway for the winter time. But fifteen percent, especially in a town like Summit, it happens with plenty of frequency. So it's not something problematic in terms of its function or maintenance or snow removal or anything like that. It's just a little steeper than you'd like to have it and does not conform with the requirements of the ordinance. So that would be a variance we also would require. That wasn't listed in Krista's memo, so I just want to make sure to point that out. And I think the rest of the letter is pretty self-explanatory, unless Mr. Dour has questions or wanted to touch on some of this specifically that I missed.
The only thing I would just say to the board is that part of the applicant noted that they were going to need to go to the common council to get approval, and then also through the engineering department, to get approval to do some improvements on the easement. The applicant will, knows that any improvements that are on there are, he's taking at his own risk. In the event the city would have to go through there and do any improvements to that pipeline, they would have to remove some of those improvements. I think televising the pipe is a good idea after the fact because if there was any damage done during construction, that would be evident at that point, and they have that on record with the city.
We need to stipulate in the resolution that that's to be reviewed by the board engineer?
And the city. And, and the city, yeah. After, after the constructions completed.
And we can supply them with the one that was done already.
That'd be, that'd be great.
As, as the baseline, to see what, what, what was in place initially.
Yeah. I mean, the applicant noted that their, even though there's a 553-square-foot increase in impervious coverage, they're accommodating 2,400 roughly in the two seepage bits, which are oversized for the site, moving them away from the side property line. And then the roof leaders are being tied into the, into the easement, the storm water line that runs the easement. So, that's all subject to city engineering approval.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Clark?
I think that's it. I mean, as far as the easement goes, and it may be something I'll have to testify at the council level when we're discussing the easement improvements. I mean, I think what we've presented actually provides better access to this easement than exists today. Because if someone had to repair or replace a section of this, what they would in fact have to do is cross the property where the driveway is now, which is not within the easement. And, and that's really not how easements are supposed to work. You're supposed to be able to function completely within that easement. And, and, and there's also a large tree that's directly over the pipe now, that we're gonna be removing, which is, it should be removed. It shouldn't be over the pipe. That, that way, in the finished condition, what we've done with the grading and the wall positioning and everything is to allow, you know, an, an avenue here for equipment and personnel to come down in the event that something does have to happen with that. So, I think it's actually an improvement.
Excellent. Any questions from members of the board, or Mr. Clark? Seeing, hearing none? All right.
I was, I'm, we, we may be a bit of a broken record here with the driveway. And I don't know if it's Mr. Clark or the homeowner. Why the 20-foot width at the front narrowing to 12?
Yeah, I think that, that, the main function of that area is, is for what I would call the comings and goings. It's not intended to be a parking spot, that, but, but when people are coming in and out of the driveway, if someone's coming up the driveway, and someone's coming down the driveway, and they've already committed, either you're backing out into the street, or you're pulling over. What probably will happen a lot with that space is kids come home from sports, and, and you're dropping them off at the mudroom, and then parking down below, or you bring your groceries home, and you wanna bring them straight into the kitchen instead of up a flight of stairs from, from where you would normally enter in the garage. That's really the function and intent of this, in terms of its, its usefulness. It's not, it's, the, the applicants are not looking for a parking lot out front of their house. In fact, they, they do that now, and it's not, you know, they wanna get away from that. But, that, that is the purpose of that, I'll call, pull off the widened area in the top.
Any questions, Mr. Clark, from the board? Any questions from the engineer from the interested public?
Yes.
I just need you to come forward to the lectern, please. And just, you can state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address as well.
My name is Mandano R. Vandy, A-R-V-A-N-D-I. My address is 26 Twombly Drive, that's lot 35, which is exactly the lot at the bottom of the steep, steep hill.
Well, it's the lot, it's this lot right here.
Correct.
Sure.
My first question is, did the, was there an understanding that there will be now another step, which would be a storm water management plan that will have to happen before this is approved?
Yes. So, Ms. Dower, can you explain what, what is a storm water management plan? What does this mean for this application?
It really would just be that the applicant is gonna put a plan together stating how they're going to handle the runoff from the roof leaders, where that's gonna go from the, into the, the drywall that's proposed to collect the storm water from the driveway, and how that's gonna be managed, and how it's gonna be maintained.
Okay.
So, it's, you can't just put it in the ground and leave it there. They have to maintain it on a regular basis.
So, you're looking for a, a written plan to supplement the actual plans that have been submitted, including operation and maintenance?
Right.
Understood.
My second question is, when coming with all the requirements and the specifics of the sizes of the tanks that are now going to be put in because now it's being addressed, I wanna better understand how, you know, on what premise, in terms of climate change or storms that are happening now that might not have been happening in the past, in order to kind of, what are the calculations, or how do we best understand the people that are at the bottom of the hill, kind of, as, as these slopes are going to be changed? And, as you know, when things change, things don't necessarily always go the way that they're planned. How do you come up with, or how does one have a, a comfortable feeling that, you know, all the, all the questions have been asked, and what the better questions have been asked, in terms of what might be happening in the future, which I know you can't guess?
If I could, I wouldn't be here.
Yes. But, in terms of my home is right where all the slopes are all changing and everything.
Right.
And it's all asleep, super-sleeped out slope from where I am also. I just wanna better understand how this could affect.
Well, I, you know, you're right, we can't see the future. What I have done, a lot of, though personally and professionally, is, is, is review a lot of the past. So, what I've done, that, I don't know, from conversation, it seems like it's a little uncommon. I look at rainfall data, you know, and, and I have spreadsheets of data from the Canoe Brook Station, from a couple of stations in Chatham, Madison, to get an understanding of what happens with rainfall in our area. And, and, and going back at least 15 years, it's been my experience in reviewing this data that what we tend to see under normal circumstances, year to year, is we get about between zero and four rain events that, that exceed three inches of rain in 24 hours. That happens about zero to four times a year. So, some years, we don't ever have a storm event like that, and some we have three or four. In fact, we'll probably be within that this year. It just happens that two of them came, you know, a week apart from each other, and one of them was extraordinary. So, so the, the IDA event that we had, we had not seen since 2011, when Irene happened. All that said, what we do for storm water design, for residential projects, and even commercial projects of a certain size, is, is we look at the project and determine what is the increase in coverage. So, how much more surface that's impenetrable is being added to the project. And then we have to manage the storm water so that we offset whatever that increase in impervious coverage is with a management system, commonly a drywall system. In this case, because we want an improvement, we didn't just manage the 553 square feet. We're taking as a practical, because that's the other side of it, is you, you say, well, you gotta manage 500 square feet. Okay, that's not a big area, and if we put a drain at the bottom of the driveway, we're catching more than 500 square feet. So, we wouldn't size the drywall just for that. We size it for what we're actually managing with the drywall. So, in this case, it's 2,400 square feet of the driveway is gonna come into this drain and be fed into the tanks that are below the ground and constructed as, as per my detail here. I don't know if you're familiar with what a drywall is, but you dig, dig a big hole, an excavation down to a depth, and then bed of stone, and you have the tanks, you surround it with stone, and then covers go on, and you backfill. So, on the surface, it, it doesn't look like anything, you know, or you have the covers that are over them, so you can inspect them. And then the water goes into there, and then it infiltrates into the ground over time. But, you wanna size those tanks to accommodate a certain volume of water that might happen in a, in a certain storm event. What we use in, in Summit, and in many towns, actually, is a three-inch rain event. So, that's the, the instance where you have a few times a year, you hit that level. That's what this is designed to handle for the driveway, is three inches of rainfall over that impervious area. That's the volume, then, that you need to store for. So, that's what goes into the design for, for this type of situation. Now, if we start seeing IDAs every year, then we may need to start looking at, at adjusting how we, how we do this design. But, you know, for 98% plus of, of our rain events every year, this is way more than necessary.
And in terms of checks and balances, certainly, you represent, you know, the change that wants to be done. In terms of checks and balances, is it just the engineer that oversees it, or do the other property owners have a right, and, or is there a, a case, or cases, that there's another set of eyes, or another set of calculations that might come into effect, that might have different, you know, parameters in terms of how they predict water in the future?
Well, there may be other people that have different parameters. I mean, I'm operating based on what's within the Summit's ordinance and general practice over many years for, for storm water design. Certainly, someone else could look at this and, and, and say, no, no, you need to have, you know, bigger storage, and, and, you know, we could debate that. But, you know, what, we're sort of moving forward with the system that we have now. Again, we can't see the future. If you get a six-and-a-half-inch rainfall, and or if it comes down in two or three hours, honestly, there's not much any storm water system can really do. It's, that's an inundation that even the town's drains can't really handle all that. It's a, you know, you get with flash flooding events that happen, I don't know what you could design to, to, to escape that. But, what you do have, as a resident and a neighbor to a project, is the right to keep an eye on things and make a call if something doesn't seem right. When, when it's in construction, that happens all the time. You know, I have people call me and say, hey, I need help. I have a project uphill of me, and I've got mud running down my driveway. What do I do? So, so there is recourse, and, and there are other eyes looking at this. Inspections happen on a regular basis, and, you know, if there was something that went sideways during the construction project, you certainly have the recourse of contacting the city or the soil erosion district to make sure it's corrected.
And post-construction. If construction happens, and then if, if, and result somehow doesn't, you know, are there, what is the recourse?
Well, the board-
It sounded good on that day, but it didn't turn out to be so good.
As a condition, yep, as a condition of the application, that will be considered by the board, will, will require submission of the storm water management plan that gets reviewed by our experienced, very competent board engineer. And we would welcome, of course, your input as well to understand that. If you'd like to be a part of that, I'm sure Ms. Alfonso could coordinate that. But, beyond that, we would retain what's called drainage jurisdiction for a two-year period. So, we would give you essentially, as a member of the interested public, anyone impacted potentially by a change that has come about by the approval of this application, the ability to come back, to present that information to us, and work constructively with the applicant to address anything that we can attribute to a change to the property.
Right. So, so if, so if I testify that there's gonna be a net improvement on this property, which has- So, so whatever, whatever you may, whatever you may experience today should be a little better after this project is done. And, a year after the project's done, on an ongoing basis, you're saying, no, that's not the case. I have this happening, didn't happen before. That's your recourse, is to, you know, contact the board and say, hey, look, I'm a resident, I, I have a concern about this project, it's post-construction, I'd like to, you know, bring it up at the board. And, and, and you have that recourse. That's why they retain the jurisdiction.
I just want, Andrew, they'll have to get a grade from it as well, right? The city engineer-
Yes, yes.
-to review it as well?
Yes. This gets reviewed again by the city engineer. Mr. Doer's the board engineer, and then the city engineer issues the actual permits for anything that happens. So, this will get looked at again, even before it gets to permit.
And, and one last question.
Sure.
In terms of, you know, notification, when we were notified till this, I don't think a good seven days passed by. And I'm curious, in, in our experience-
Right.
-whether it was mailed on a certain day, or whether we received it, or whatever, it doesn't matter. But, from when we were not, when we received anything till when we're standing here, it's less than seven days. I'm curious as to whether there are larger window of opportunity in terms of the public looking at anything till the next of the approvals of the city, or whatever additional work that's being done, research?
Yeah, so?
I, yeah, I did see the certified mailings that went out. They did comply with the municipal land use law requirement that they be mailed within 10 days. I understand that isn't always the timeframe that they get mailed pursuant to the post office, or whoever's delivering it, but it wasn't.
No, I appreciate that. I'm just wondering, going forward, is it just a 10-day policy again for the next step that has to be done?
No, the next step would not, the grade from it does not require notification.
Okay.
So, I think we, we would ask, right, and oftentimes, applicants that come before us with relatively involved applications, and thoughtful applications, and I see neighbors here, applicants that are interested in seeing the project succeed, but also being good neighbors for likely many decades to come, to maintain an open line of communication. And whether it's through Ms. Alfonso, or directly through the applicant, you raise any questions or concerns, and that Mr. Clark maybe is more proactive in sharing some of the progress that they make with respect to storm water management, so.
I appreciate you.
Wonderful. And, and the plans are available to review at, at City Hall as well, as, as, I don't know if they're still online now, and-
They're online?
Yeah, so, so you can go online and look at them, you know, after you leave here, if you'd like.
If you, over the next week or two. If you'd like to leave your contact information, Chris Nicola, our board secretary, would be happy to connect with you, make sure you see all that.
I appreciate you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the interested public? Working hard tonight, Mr. Clark.
I love it.
Good stuff. Ms. Alfonso?
Thank you. If, if the board would like to, we do have the, the landscape architect here, but I, I know that we addressed the, the one main question of the city forester. So, I'd just ask if you have any questions.
As a reminder, we're doing the application on the submission of a landscaping plan, subject to Mr. Linton's review and approval, with a special notation to make every effort possible to preserve the 20-inch tree that we discussed earlier. Does anyone have any questions for the landscape architect? We can certainly bring them forward. On the board, no? Ma'am, do you have any questions for the landscape architect? Would you like to speak with them? Okay, fair enough. So, then we'll, we'll pass.
Okay. Thank you. And that's all of our witnesses.
Wonderful. All right. This is, again, then, also an opportunity for the public. If you'd like to make any statement, comment about the application, in favor or in opposition, you're welcome to provide that now. No pressure.
We're in favor.
All right, wonderful.
We're in the process of the building for them.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing your questions forward. Thank you. Yeah.
You're great.
Wonderful. All right. With that, you have no closing, no further closing remarks?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alfonso. All right, let's review then conditions that we've discussed.
Yep. So, I have five conditions noted. First is our usual compliance with the conditions noted in the board engineer's report. Second is that the applicants will submit a landscaping plan, which shall specifically include that all reasonable efforts will be used to preserve a 20-inch white oak tree in the front yard. That shall be submitted to the city forester for review and approval. Third condition is that a storm water management plan will be submitted to the city engineer for review and approval. Fourth is that the line within the easement shall be televised again once the improvements are completed. And the fifth and final condition I have noted is that drainage jurisdiction will be retained for two years after the completion of construction.
All right. Who would like to begin deliberations? Scott, jump in out of the seat, go for it.
I think this site plan is a vast improvement over the current conditions. There's clearly no storm water management at this point. Obviously, the engineers, landscape architects have done a great job taking essentially a wraparound driveway, which I don't know that anyone would, would want, and replacing it with retaining walls and usable lawn. I get why they're trying to arrange the driveway the way they are. You have to connect from the street to the garage. I think they're pretty limited in what they can do there, so makes sense to me. Architecturally, the house is beautiful. I, I don't think those encroachments are problematic. I get why the massing is being balanced the way it is, so I'm in favor of this application.
Scott, or Diana?
I'm in agreement with all of it. I think it's a beautiful design. I think it vastly improves the property. I think it will actually improve the whole neighborhood. I think it'll really improve drainage. I, I only have a concern about the width at the bottom of the driveway. And clearly, from the arrangement of these walkways, I, I understand that it's clear that there is an intention that there would, and if this was my property, clearly there's an intention that kids will be dropped off, maybe groceries would be dropped off, purchases would be dropped off here to go directly into the house before a car is brought back down to a lower-level garage. Is it possible to stipulate that cars will not be left out here, parked to the front of the driveway for extended periods of time on a regular basis? Can that be added as one of the stipulations?
If that's a condition the applicants are willing to accommodate?
Yes, that, that ones, we're willing to take that as a condition of approval.
So, then we'll note that as a sixth condition, that cars will not be parked in the front.
Besides that, I think it's, it's a beautiful design, and I'm not bothered by anything else.
We'll work with you, Ms. Alfonso, against the wording, right?
Okay.
So, that's usable, but respects the condition that's been requested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to flesh out some of my reasoning about why I really am in favor of giving the variance for the front yard setback. I was impressed by Mr. Clark's testimony about the front yard setback on adjoining houses versus across the street houses. I know in neighborhoods where the entire neighborhood slopes down, the houses on the upslope tend to be set back much further, so they're not really a good measure for what the setback should be on the downslope side of the street. I agree with Mr. Leickets that the porches, the massing is appropriate. I think if we were to require the porches and even the home office to be taken off, you'd have a very boring front facade that would look like a New England college dormitory. So for those reasons, I really can support particularly the variance for the front yard setback.
I just want to add that the site condition itself presents a significant hardship to the applicant, and I think this is a very thoughtful solution getting around that hardship. Also regarding the FAR, you know, from everything I've seen from the plans, it seems that the site can amply accommodate that increased FAR. So for those reasons and all the reasons my colleagues have articulated, I'm in favor.
Okay. Anyone else care to add? I'd also like to applaud the applicants for bringing together a good and thoughtful team and I think projecting to the neighbors that have brought some thoughtful concerns, their commitment to, through the construction process and beyond, to ensure that they're offering a net improvement to the property, to neighborhood and the community. So we're grateful for that. With that, entertain a motion to approve the application with the conditions as noted. Any movement? So moved. Okay. Scott and Diana. Krista, get a roll call.
Sure. Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartzstein?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Leickets?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Chairman Spur?
Yes. Thank you.
We're going to take five minutes to stretch our legs and then we will return for Seven Dorset Lane. Thank you. Angie?
I think why are you, um, oh, I see.
Yeah. Hi. Thank you. Good hustle, Ms. Toth.
I am. I'll pay attention this time.
All right. All right. We're back for third item on the agenda, Seven Dorset Lane. For this application, I will be recusing as will Dr. Levine, and that will put Mr. Mullen in charge. Godspeed, Mr. Mullen.
Apologies in advance.
Will the applicants for Seven Dorset Lane come on up? All right. If you could each please raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes. And please, one at a time, state your name, spell your last name.
Dana Similuka, C.I.M.I.L.L.U.C.A.
And Bettina Hernandez, H.E.R.M.A.N.D.E.Z.
All right. Thank you. Would you tell us a little bit about your application?
So we have been thinking and talking ourselves about doing this since we bought this house in 2013. The, there's a few different elements to the project, but the one that I think is relevant tonight involves a desire to increase the curb appeal of the house, just make it look nicer. For example, if you're standing on the street and looking at it. It was built, I believe, in the early 50s. Frankly, in my opinion, it's kind of a, we love the house, but it's kind of like a doll looking brick ranch. And we just like to, you know, and the, you know, this is one thing I didn't realize before we started talking with Mr. Rosen, but it's something that, I guess, Bettina has a better sense of design than I do, but it's something I didn't realize until he articulated it, but the door is sideways. When you're looking at the house from the street, you don't see the door. And I think maybe that bothered me, even though I didn't actually realize it. So anyway, we'd like to jazz up the look of the house in the front, basically. That's, again, the part of the project that I think is relevant tonight. As part of that, we'd like to put a front porch in the middle of the front of the house. And I think part of the reason we want to do that is because that's an integral part of the design that the architects have come up with to make the house look better. And also, we would just like to have a front porch. We, we're outdoors people. We love to be outdoors. We, the only work that we've done on the house so far that we may discuss later is a patio that we put, we did some work in the backyard, including putting a patio. You know, that's been a big success for us. We spent a lot of time in the backyard as a result, and we love it. You know, we like sitting out there during the day. We like hanging out there at night, looking up at the moon and the stars. And we'd now like to have another outdoor option in the front where, you know, during the day and even at night, I guess, we can sit out there. One beautiful thing about our house in Dorset Lane is it's a quiet cul-de-sac. There's a lot of kids, including our own. We have a 10-year-old and 11-year-old. Every, you know, month, it seems, another family moves in with small children. And it's a great street for the kids to, you know, play on with their bicycles. And we'd like to be able to sit on the porch and watch them do so. And another thing I've noticed is a lot of times people will come, will come visit us and in the nice weather, and I find us often pulling, you know, folding chairs out of the garage and just putting them on the front yard. And it just shows that we have a desire to be out in front of the house. Seems like it'd be nice to actually, you know, sit on a porch when we're doing so. So anyway, that's why we're here and obviously we look forward to discussing it further with you. Thank you.
Any questions from the board for the applicants?
I guess one thing I would just ask, something that's noted in our zoning officer's report, just the existing patio, do you know how or when it was installed and by whom?
Yeah, it was installed in 2014 by Randy Chitini, who we hired to do the project.
Okay. Should probably amend the application to include variance relief for that since it encroaches. Would you be amenable to that?
Okay.
Should we call your architect?
All right. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Dave Rosen, R.O.S.E.N.
Thank you. And Mr. Rosen, I know you've appeared before the board many times. Any changes to your credentials since the last time you were here?
No.
I imagine the board would like to accept you as a mentor.
Yes. So is it a convention that I take this off to speak or? Yep. Okay. So we have old style, since we're in person, we have boards rather than having things on Zoom. If you prefer that, we could, next time I can bring it both ways. I don't know if you can see it, but you each have copies of the photos. And in the photos, you can see the large front yard. You can see it in a couple of those photos. You can also see that you can't see the front door. Can you bring these closer? Can you bring that number? Since you want to use the microphone and I can't just walk around and talk. So the, as Dana mentioned, the project is to add a front porch onto here. You can see that the garage is quite evident in the front, sorry if I'm blocking your view, but you can't see the front door. This view from sort of in front of a neighbor's house diagonally, you can see that front door. So that's something that we wanted to correct. So we're adding a front porch. You've probably looked at these already, but the site plan as it is and this rectangle almost dead center in the middle of the property is the porch. The porch is just a little under 20 feet by eight feet, so 160 square feet or just under. When looking at the front of the house, the existing is on the top. You cannot, there are some steps going up, so you assume the front door is near there somewhere, but you can't really see it. In the proposed, we have a number of renovations, but the primary one is to get the front door visible, and we're adding this front porch. In doing that, we're also doing a variety of other things with the house. We've cleaned up, we've removed the stone or covered it. Up here, we've changed the windows, which are not centered on the garage door. Here they are. There's a little roof above, changing the garage door and the front door to match and to look a little bit better, changing the color of the house to paint it and so on. Viewed from the right side of the house, you can see that the porch extends out eight feet, which is about half of the length that this bedroom wing, it currently extends to the front, so it doesn't block anybody else's view, any of the neighbors. And from the front, it comes across about two-thirds of the way across the front. So again, where the office is over on the far right, you don't, it doesn't block the view either out of that or block the view from any neighbor's house toward this. Many of the other houses in this neighborhood have added second floors, which causes the floor area to be exceeded by a lot more. We're not choosing to do that. Inside, we're renovating a variety of things, including taking out the flat ceiling, raising it up so that it gives a sense of a bigger space without really changing the, without changing things on the footprint of the house other than this front porch. And in looking at the floor plan, the area that's in, has a little bit of a sort of beige tone here, just shows that new front porch, the access in, and it's a much nicer way to enter the house rather than coming into a very small space, which is about four feet by five and a half, and then having to turn and turn again to really get into the main part of the, of the living room. So we're here for the one variance for building coverage. One-story houses almost always spread out more than if the floors are stacked, and that's the case here. So this is in the R10 zone. The property is assumed to be about 10,000 square feet. In this case, it's just a little bit more than that. The allowable building coverage is 18%. The current is 18.7 and the proposed is 20.2. So we're over by 2.2%, but it doesn't, as I mentioned, it doesn't adversely affect any of the neighbors or the character of the neighborhood. It is, as I showed in the first drawing on V1, it's really about as dead center on the property as it could be. It doesn't block the silhouette from any angle. It does enhance the appearance and the function of this house. I'll pause there and then we can talk a little more, if you want, about that patio. Any questions on this part so far? So with regard to the question about the patio, which was Krista's second comment, it was not- it was not, it was not evident in the files in the zoning department as to how that got there, when that got there. They bought the house in 2013, in 2014, that's when the work was done. The existing, I brought a couple of other pieces of information which can be added to this. If you'd like, I can mark them, or whatever you would like, as part of the testimony.
Look at them now, and they haven't been, we'd like to mark them as, I imagine, A1?
Correct, A1.
Okay, and these are two photos, and I'm sorry if I'm in your way, so I'll bring it forward. Two photos from about the same angle. The first, the one on the left here is the photo of the deck. That's from the real estate, the listing, from when the house, when the house was sold, when they bought it. They had cleaned it up a bit, you can see that they obviously removed some bushes in some of the areas, and they sort of made it look kind of nice, but the deck was not in good shape. It was a bulky item in the backyard, and the preference was to just have the steps coming out of the door, the existing door, which is shown on both of these photos, and then just step down to a patio. Now, the patio, we had discussions at the end of last week, when we got the comments, about how did that patio get there, who remembers? And so, Randy Shatini was the landscape contractor who did it. We have one other thing that I want to show you on this. This drawing was submitted, but I added the property survey from when they bought the house. Can I label that as A2?
Correct.
And if you can't see this very clearly, I'll just mark it out, that the back of the house is across here. The existing patio and landing are there. Back of the house of what it was is here, and that was the deck. Hopefully, that makes it a little bit more visible for you at that distance. So, the deck was non-compliant because of the required rear yard setback. This counts as a structure, because it's more than 1 foot above ground. My understanding, and I was not involved, I didn't know, we hadn't met yet, and so on, but my understanding from phone conversations, and I recognize that this is hearsay, but Randy Shatini said that he had spoken with Krista at the time in 2014. And the, my assumption on this, and again, I'm just assuming what probably happened, is that they reviewed that the deck was non-compliant, and that a slate patio being in the ground was moving towards compliance. I have the portions of the zoning ordinance, which refers to accessory structures and so on, and where patios and decks can be. But the, one of, one portion of it says that the patio cannot, I'll put it in positive. It has to be at least 15 feet away from a rear property line, and that's what this is. So, 15 feet is about there. Krista mentions it's 16 feet, it's probably, it's between 15 and 16. But the shape of this patio and the position of it was, I assume, because of that requirement. Summit's ordinance gets a little bit fuzzy, and Chris can probably identify this a little bit more, but it talks about how patios, patios are permitted within, in the backyard, so long as they maintain that 15-foot setback. But there's another part that says that accessory structures, if they're attached to the principal building, become a part of the principal building. So, that's what the deck was. And there's a question about whether this is, because the patio is actually this piece, and then there's the steps. So, it becomes a matter of interpretation, and the convention in Summit is that if, if a structure, if a patio is at least 10 feet away, it's no longer a part of the principal structure. Sometimes, if it's physically attached, that is, let's say that a property is on a slope, and a patio comes straight out from the first floor, and it's got retaining walls around it and so on, then it has other limitations. It can only go 10 feet into a rear yard setback. So, I don't mean to get too into the weeds here, but I think that the interpretation was, let's keep it off of, off of the rear yard by 15 feet, so it is compliant in that. The side yard setback, right now, 12, this is only 7.1, so 15 would be back here, but it maintains the 12-foot setback, which is somewhere, sorry, that angle went a little bit off, but it maintains the 12-foot setback on the side, which is the setback for all structures in this zone. So, I think that there was probably something that was worked out, where it was considered moving towards compliance, but perhaps not fully achieving compliance, depending on how that patio is viewed, whether it's viewed as a separate patio, or whether it's viewed as an extension of the principal structure. So, Chris, you can have at it and tell me where I went wrong on that, but I think I got most of that, most of that right.
Yeah, if it were me, I would recommend to the board to treat it as attached. If anyone has, if anyone doesn't have a problem with it, I think the attached is a little bit more burdensome, and you can grant variance relief off of it that way. But, you know, does the board have any concerns about the, you know, treating it in that fashion?
That provides the most, most relief to the applicant, yeah.
Yes, just giving it that, you know, cleaning it up as nicely as possible and granting the variance in accordance with Krista's comments there. I think it's the easiest way to make sure everything's all set, and there's no issues in the future.
Right, I think that that's probably, as you've all, several of you have mentioned, that is the, giving a variance for that means that it's resolved, there isn't still a question. If you decided to say that it was a separate structure, then, then it's compliant, I think, except there's another piece about 15 feet away on the side yard. Even though you could have a three-story house, you can't have an accessory structure out there. Anyway, do it your way, I'm totally fine with that.
I think the applicant benefits most from
Yes.
restrictive interpretation in that way. If it goes the other way, they're still covered.
Right. Okay, so I hope that that is even more than what you wanted to hear about the patio, but I think it covers it and explains why there was not a permit, or why there wasn't a zoning determination on that seven years ago.
Okay, you mentioned the word permit. Was there a permit to put in a patio? Here we go.
I think, no, I think the answer is no, but, no, there wasn't. Our, our, this is the first home that-
You would have been the ones to do it, because you owned the house at that point in time, correct? I know you didn't own it in 1913, which is what Krista wrote.
Right.
But in 2014, you bought it in 2013, so this patio was put in under your
Yes.
ownership.
Yes.
Therefore, the responsibility for a permit, under any circumstances, is yours. What I'm trying to find out is, was, did that happen?
No, it didn't happen. And, but can I just explain?
Be my guest.
This is the first home that we've owned, and that was the first project that we've done. And I'm sure ignorance is not a defense, but FYI. We hired Randy Shatini, the landscape architect, and he was our guide. And he told us that, we did what he told us. And he said, as Dave mentioned, that he had a conversation with Krista, and that Krista had said, effectively, correct me if I'm wrong, that you guys are okay to go ahead without a permit. And that's why we did it the way we did it. Unfortunately, there's no record of that, we've tried to find it, we can't.
I think sometimes what happens, not knowing your circumstances or being an actual part of it, is that when you go, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when you go to fix a structure that needs repair that's already existing, sometimes you don't go through the same permitting process to just fix, like, say, they said, well, we're going to fix this exact, existing deck, but then modified it somehow to make it a patio. And then sometimes what happens with the landscapers is they say, oh, you don't need a, you don't need a permit for that, because that's landscaping. So, I think you kind of fell in this weird gray zone, where maybe you thought you were doing it right, you were relying on your landscape architect or whatever his title is to do the work for you. And maybe if you had just replaced the deck, it would have sort of been grandfathered in, because the deck was there. But then you changed the plan, but then maybe you thought you didn't need the permit, or he didn't think you needed the permit. I understand Mr. Steiner's position, which is that you have to seek the answers to these questions, but I kind of see in this circumstance how this may have happened.
The difference between a suspended sentence and a fine.
But it is a curious situation, right? You've got, so you call up Krista, and usually when you call the town with anything like this, if you, if it was, if it was an absolute necessity that you get a permit, you'll probably get a visit from the construction officials, and then later on, you get a visit from the tax assessor. And it seems like those things didn't happen in this circumstance, so it is an unusual situation, but there's some ambiguity here.
May- I don't want to deliberate yet, unless we want to deliberate, but-
I got my answer, so I guess we should move on.
Okay.
Cover that deliberation, I guess. Mr. Dower, I know there's some comments in the engineer's letter, I'm not sure if you wanted it.
The only comment I have was this for screening the air base unit.
Right, and that'll happen, yeah.
Any other questions from the board, not pertaining to the permitting process? Seeing none, is there anyone from the interested public who would like to ask a question? For that matter of the applicant as well, since we skipped that beforehand?
I don't think there's a sound.
Seeing none. Anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
No, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Ball, would you go over the conditions, please?
Sure, the only condition I have is our usual condition, that applicants will comply with the conditions noted in the board engineer's report.
Okay. On to deliberations, who would like to begin?
I think this is a minor change, and it's beneficial. And it will bring this, this non-conformist to a conforming situation. And I do support it, I think it's a good idea. And the entrance also will look much better from the, from the street, which is really needed for this property, so I support it.
I'm a big fan of the whole Cromwell Parkway neighborhood, I think it's a lovely little mid-century slice. So, I'm very grateful that the applicants aren't going to blow up their house or do anything, so yes, everything they're doing is to enhance the house and help preserve the neighborhood the way it is. And all I can say is, Mr. Rosen stole my thunder, because, I mean, my big point was, if you can't figure out where the front door of the houses, there's something wrong with the architecture.
I feel like this application has a bit of a hardship because of the bizarre shape of the site. Obviously, when the house was built, they did not take into any kind of consideration the angles or anything to do with how the house sits on the site itself. So, I feel like they're kind of being unnecessarily punished for that in terms of setbacks. So, I feel like this is an entirely reasonable application. I love the improvements that the architect has made to the house, it's very modest, it makes sense. It's a modernization without completely changing the effect or the era that the house was from. It's just really refreshing to see, to echo what Claire was saying, that it's not a 7,000-square-foot, three-story megalith being constructed on the site, so I would be in favor of this application.
Just speaking directly to the patio, it seems from the circumstances presented, the applicant's made an error in not getting a permit. However, they did inquire with the town and made an effort to comply with what they were under the impression the restrictions were. So, I don't think we could hold that against them. To Mr. Loikitz's point, the site does present some hardships with respect to the location of the patio. So, the changes themselves, I think, are an improvement, and certainly wouldn't adversely affect the streetscape, so I'm in favor of this as well. Can we get a motion on the application?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartzstein?
Yes.
Mr. Millay?
Yes.
Mr. Loikitz?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Ms. Sager?
Yes.
Thank you very much, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You did a good job.
Thank you for listening.
Oh, I'm going to Locust.
Good, and even better, you have the applicant, right? All right. Mr. Gilman, welcome.
Thank you.
He's back. Rowdy board over here, Ms. Toth here, out of line, no, it's just me. All right, well, welcome back for our third here.
Hey, Dave, did you leave the exhibits?
Oh, I'll say, they were tied up, I'll leave them over here, I'll fold them, I'll leave them.
Thank you.
All right.
Sorry.
To begin the third application for the evening, 34 Locust Drive. Mr. Gilman, if you'd just come to the front here, or you can stay there, wherever, wherever you want to go, wherever you're comfortable. We're just going to ask you, quickly, to be sworn in?
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name, spell your last name?
Brian Gilman, G-I-L-H-A-N.
Thank you.
And then before you hand it up to her to do the heavy lifting, just tell us a little bit about the application, what you're trying to accomplish.
Sure, so we are looking to renovate the second floor, to add some space to the bedroom, and add a bathroom, and also looking to replace the garage. I'll kind of come back to those in a little bit more detail. We moved there three and a half years ago now. We were drawn to the house, both by the proximity to town, but also the character of the home. I grew up in a house very, very similar in the Philadelphia suburbs, pre-1900 build, colonial. So, I was aware of the kind of character that I liked, but also the challenges a house like that would present. When we moved there, my daughter was only two, my son was not yet born. So, I think that we knew, you know, we had some time before to kind of feel out what those challenges might look like and what we might need to do to make it more functional. As a family's quite literally grown, you know, we've realized that in order to kind of make this a forever home, we're going to need a second bathroom, and we're going to need more closet space, you know. I think pre-1900 builds didn't really think about closet spaces in the same way that I or more so my wife do. But, so, those are kind of the driving concerns of the renovation upstairs. You know, I think there was an earlier renovation of the downstairs that expanded the kitchens, so the downstairs is really functional and works really well, whereas upstairs is kind of still very choppy and smaller rooms. And like I said, just the one bathroom, which we know isn't going to last as a working arrangement too much longer with the kids getting older. The garage, when we moved in, the garage was something we knew we would want to replace at some point. I think, you know, it was more kind of economic prudence at the time to kind of wait on- at the time to kind of wait on that, um, it's, it's kind of, A, doesn't really match the aesthetic of the house at all, it's a bit of an eyesore, um, functionally, it doesn't do much, you can't really pull any of our cars into the garage, um, it's not watertight at this point, so anytime it rains, it, it leaks, um, and generally, just doesn't look very good, so our, our thought process there and, and our goal there is, is really to kind of bring it more proportional to the house, but also more in line with the aesthetic of the house, um, and, uh, we did learn through the, I guess, application process that it also, and the grading plan, that it does sit too close to the property line around us, so when we do replace it, ideally, we know, we'll make sure that it conforms with the four feet, and I think that's all.
All right, thanks, any questions for the applicant? Understanding we'll hear from the architect in a moment? No?
Well, I, I actually do have a question, not about the house itself, but more, um, the sighting, because you're right next to the salt brook there, what happened during Ida? Were you okay?
Yes, it was kind of crazy, um, our side of the creek, I've never seen it come over our side, and it didn't actually, it stayed probably two feet below, the other side of the creek was, I mean, it was solid, like twenty feet onto the neighbor's lawn, um, we got a little bit of water in the basement that receded within an hour or so, um, but other than that, um, you know, the side of the house was, by next morning, was completely dry, and like I said, the creek, it was scary to look at, and the way they built the new bridge, it's, I think someone told me it's not as high, the arc, so, like, it was definitely up against the bridge, and I was like concerned it might come over it, it never did, and then again, like, we probably still had like three feet on our side of the wall. Fortunately, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Rush, back up to you.
And for this application as well, if you could please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Elizabeth Rush, R.U.S.H.
And for the record, you were just admitted as an expert in the prior application this evening, so the board will accept your credentials.
Okay, great, I am definitely never using these, this again, I'll go back to the boards, this is really, I feel like they keep going to sleep. Okay, uh, Brian did a great job, uh, giving me an intro, um, but they, they basically came to me, um, you know, a few months ago, and wanted, they were very happy with the first floor of the house, um, but also, like Brian mentioned, wanted to just expand, just get a little bit more space on the second floor, so the majority of the project on the second floor is going to be, um, on the first sheet of the application, it shows Andrew Clark's, uh, existing plan, but then also the proposed plan, so the shaded area, um, is the actual area of work, so on the house, it's an L-shaped, it constitutes, I think it's a hundred and sixty-eight square feet, and it's, um, it's a second floor addition, but it's, we're only building one story because it's on an existing first floor extension. That will house, um, basically, a little bit of room, part of it will be a little bit of room for their primary bathroom, um, en suite, and also, uh, primary walk-in closet to their bedroom, um, and then again, the other shaded portion in the rear left of the property is the proposed garage, um, again, complying with the four-foot setbacks on the rear and on the side, as we've, as we've noted. So, the variances we're seeking are for the FAR, um, whereas, let me just pull up my notes for Krista, um, the FAR is thirty, proposed is thirty-six point twelve percent, where twenty-five percent is the maximum permitted, again, um, I know it's really, really late, but I just want, like, two minutes to tell you the history of the house. This house was built in, I believe, eighteen ninety-eight by William Larned, which is Larned Brook that we just discussed, um, he actually built it as a collegiate prep school, so it is a large house for the site, um, it was turned over to a teacher there, and it became the, um, the Potsdam School, which I think it's most famous for housing a couple of, uh, foreign Chinese girls that, um, ended up being, I think one was the First Lady of the Republic of China eventually, so, actually has some really cool history, um, and the Gilmans want to preserve the exterior of the house, as you can see in the elevations, just see. So, the, the yellow shaded area is actually what we're adding on, so everything else is remaining the same. On the, the majority of the, the build will be on the rear of the house, so you'll see a tiny bit from the front of the house, but it's just off to the right-hand side, but it's, it's kind of hard to see with all the trees, so it's really just on the back of the house, um, and again, it's a hundred and sixty-eight square feet, um, I can show you the rear of the home, so again, it will be right above that, that bay area where the kitchen is. So it'll be right about here, that's where we're proposing to build. It complies with the side yard setback and the rear yard setback, um, we are seeking the twenty-five point three percent building coverage variance, whereas eighteen percent is the maximum permitted, again, this is actually just an effect of we're rebuilding the garage, so we're recalculating the building coverage, but we're actually reducing the overall building coverage from what is existing, um, the existing is twenty-five point eight percent, as Krista notes, so we're reducing it by half a percent, which is good, um, and then the block coverage proposed is forty-five point nine percent, whereas the existing is forty-seven point two percent, so we're making the garage a little bit smaller right now, it's, Krista notes, it's like a two-and-a-half car garage, but it has three doors on the front, um, as Brian noted, you can't really pull a car in, um, I almost wonder at what one point it might've been a stable or something, but, um, yeah, it's, you know, it's just like an odd size, um, the, the door openings aren't, aren't large enough for a modern car, and it is in disrepair, so we'd like to rebuild that and have it match the house.
Do you have a photo of the garage?
I don't think that I do.
I might, somewhere.
No, I don't think that I have one with me. Questions?
Any questions for Rush? Mr. Dower actually made, you want to pull out from the engineer's letter?
The, just the one thing, whether or not they're gonna be adding, uh, air conditioning units, any additional air conditioning units with the proposed renovations to the house, for generator?
Yeah, there's, there's none, none proposed at the time.
Okay. And I think that was, uh, mentioned about, uh, if we're gonna be removing any trees and deferring to the, to the forester.
Right.
Other than that, as, as, um, Mr. Rush noted, they're reducing the building coverage and the impervious coverage, so there's no requirements for stormwater improvements.
All right, I did mention, I did note here, though, point three in Krista's memo around the side porch, remaining an open porch in perpetuity, is that at all objectionable? Unobjectionable, okay.
That, though, I mean, if somebody were to enclose a side porch, they'd need a variance to do that, right?
Right.
Yes, I, I think so, I mean, in my professional opinion, there was.
I mean, because, un- unless the FAR rules change significantly.
Right.
So it's nothing we would need to condition?
I mean, for design purposes, maybe, but-
Yeah.
It's, it's fine if you want to add that, they're, they're agreeable to that.
If they're willing to agree, and there's no issue, they-
No issue.
Now, that, um, yeah, as noted, it's required additional variance if there are the current FAR requirements there, but just to be safe, I don't know if that-
How much of an encumbrance is that on the homeowner, when it goes, comes time to sell his property?
It, it would just be a requirement that's noted in the resolution, that would be publicly available, any potential buyer would be able to see that, and it would, so, it would pertain to the next property owner as well.
And would it, um, be any different if the, if the next owner wanted to enclose the porch, would, they would ha- they would come for a variance?
Exactly.
And would it make the chances of that variance worse?
Having known that it was specifically addressed by this board as being required, it, it's something that could be taken into account, but it's something that would be weighed on at that time.
Okay.
Is that something that would come with a title search? When, when you're actually buying a property?
I don't think so.
No.
Depends on the extent of the search, but an ordinary search is not going to ask presumed work resolutions.
I don't think you're gonna know that unless you go to do that work, and then you run into it.
I, I think that's the point, you know, she's, I, I, I could easily see, like, what we saw in the last case, where, you know, you go to enclose a side porch, you're probably not even getting a permit for that, because you're just closing a porch, and-
How important-
We're setting up the conditions for, you know, a non-justified legal permit.
You're likely going to be back to where you were about twenty-five minutes ago-
Exactly.
Uh, if I come in for it, and it's like, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
How important is it that we put that encumbrance on the homeowner?
Is it important to you as a board member?
No.
Claire, what do you think, as our HPC representative?
If I were the design police, I'd love to see it, I know we're not the design police.
I, I'm not particularly compelled to encumber it.
But what are we trying to say, which part? So, there's a, on the left side of the house, there's a, it's actually probably my favorite part of the house, um, if you actually visit the inside of this porch, um, it's lovely, it's on the left side of the house, it's covered, um, right, currently it has some lattice work that's been there forever, as long as I can remember, um, and, sorry, I just pulled up my email, um, and, let's see if I can pull it up, there it is, so it's over on the left side, you see this lattice work right here? I don't know if Krista, maybe she zoned in on this because of the lattice work, so it feels a little bit more enclosed, I mean, this, I, it's, you know, it's almost, I, I compare it to saying, well, don't, they're never allowed to close in the front portico, like, I, I feel like you see open porches all the time, um, I'm not really sure why this one particularly came up, um, in her comments, but-
So, let, let's put down our design police badge and leave it alone, right? And understand if they do choose to do it, you'll come and request the appropriate variance.
Yeah.
I think also, uh, like, we even, like, it's so cold on that side porch, it's like six feet of air and then to the hard ground, I, I don't think it would ever be an option, even.
I think it would be more of an extent, if, a reput- put it this way, if a reputable con- if they, if anyone hired a reputable contractor, they would know to- there's more extensive amount of work than to enclose that porch, and they would need to get a permit.
Okay, we just saw Krista bold this sentence and write perpetuity, so I just want to make sure we checked that part. Any other questions, uh, from the pocket of the board? Or is there anything else you want to add? Okay, so we would-
I, I do have one minor question, I may have missed it in the testimony, but, Mr. Rush, I know you mentioned it is a, a large home, is it your opinion that the site can accommodate the proposed increase in FAR on the property?
Yes, I think so, we're not increasing the footprint, so, thank you, missed that.
The condition, the application on acceptance of the engineer's letter, standard, any other conditions?
That's all I had.
And I'll just note that there are no members of the interested public here, so we're not offering a question or comment, period. Okay, anything you'd like to say, Mr. Gilman in closing, unless, Mr. Rush, you have anything further?
No, just thank you for hanging in there tonight, it's a little bit of a late one, so.
No worries, okay, very well then, uh, so the one condition is the acceptance of the engineer's letter, who would like to begin the deliberations?
I'll begin. I think it's really nice, it's a modest, you know, addition to the house, it sounds like you really care about being a good steward and custodian of the house, and I do appreciate the history, thank you, um, so, and it's beautiful, and I'd like to see it stay historical in nature, and it sounds like you do too, so I think that taking into account the property, the history of the house, the modest size of the addition, what you plan on doing, it's, you're just going over an existing first floor, um, it seems like a really good improvement to modernize the house so that you can live in it, and I am in favor of this application.
Care to add anything further? Don't need to work too hard on this one, but, Diana, you, go ahead.
I, I think it's very easy to support this application, I think, uh, you know, a five-bedroom house, uh, of this, you know, it's, it's very beautiful, it's very historic, but it has one bedroom, you know, it's almost anachronistic in the twenty-first century, so, you know, I'm appreciative that you love enough to make the investment and keep it and, um, you know, bring it up to standard, I am fully supportive.
With that, I think two could support it, noting, uh, the modest reductions in, uh, items like the, the building coverage, although it exceeds the limitation, it's being brought down, so that's always a good thing, um, and appreciate too, I think there'll be a improvement to the safe use of the property with a modernization, especially of the garage, that, that's great, and then, uh, continued, uh, continued investment in the aesthetic quality of the home, the historic nature of the home is, I think, a benefit here. With that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the application with the condition noted.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, a second?
Second.
Mr. Millay, all right, we have a roll call?
Yes, uh, Mr. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartzstein?
Yes.
Mr. Millay?
Yes.
Mr. Luykens?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Chairman Spur?
Yes, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, we have one set of minutes, no resolutions?
Yeah, uh, no resolutions, we got them all last meeting, all ten of them, but, uh, just, uh, one set of minutes for August sixteenth to approve, would somebody like to move those?
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? Seeing none?
All right, uh, we are then adjourned to Monday, October fourth.